So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order and this is the regular meeting for the City Council of Minnetrista, June 15th. And our first order of business, I'd like to ask that you all join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everybody, especially those that are watching later on in YouTube. So first I'll ask that, well first I'm going to do some introductions. We have a few new people here with us this evening. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. To my left is councilmember Patricia Thole, Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortensen, Bob Christians. And then sitting in for our city engineer, thank you, who had surgery recently is Katie Casper with WSB, and welcome Katie. To my right is city administrator Mike Barone, our city finance director, Mr. Grimm, Brian Grimm. Next to him is David Abel, who is our community development director. And next to him also newer, again visiting with us because Ron Beatty is on vacation, is from Kennedy and Grayben, our attorney, Sarah Sinsala. So with that, I would look to approve, oh I'm sorry, Chief Falls on the end, and then also taking minutes here, our city clerk, Chris Lindquist. So thank you very much. Approval of the agenda, we have just, we have one additional item, and that would be under business item number C. It would be resolution number 105, appointment of the representative to the, of Minnetrista's representative to the LMCD. I don't think we have any other additions. If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I'll make a motion to approve that agenda with that addition.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda with that one addition of 6C. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We don't have any special presentations today, and we have zero persons to be heard as well. So we'll move on to our consent agenda items, consisting of approve our regular meeting minutes from June 1st of 2015, approve our work session many, many, meeting minutes from June 1st, 2015. Number C is resolution number 100-15 approving our claims. Resolution number 101-15 authorizing execution for partial termination of 2008 development agreement regarding Dutch Lake Knoll. Number E is resolution number 102-15 approving the employment status change from probationary to full-time regular for Nick Olson, associate planner. And number F, a resolution number 103-15 approving cooperative agreement with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, Three Rivers Park District, and the City of Minnetrista for the Lake Minnetonka Regional Park ravine stabilization project.
I apologize, I meant to ask a question of Mr. Barone earlier today on item D, so should I turn now or just?
Do you want, we can just pull it out? So we'll do A, B, C, E, and F. Any other ones that you would care to pull for discussion? Okay, is there approval to approve A, B, C, E, and F?
So moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Number D, Ms. Thole?
On D, on page three of six, on the Dutch Lake Knoll storm sewer improvement tax district, the third bullet there says property elsewhere in the city would be subject to the tax, but it should be would not, shouldn't it? Or am I reading that incorrectly? It's regarding the establishment of a storm sewer improvement tax district for Dutch Lake Knoll. And then the third bullet point there says, like I said, property elsewhere in the city would be subject to the tax, but it's my understanding that tax would just be applicable to those properties in Dutch Lake Knoll.
Yeah, that's, I think you're referring to the meeting minutes, our last, correct? That is correct, that it would not be subject elsewhere in the city, it would be just Dutch Lake Knoll. So this would be the meeting minutes?
Yep, you're right, yeah.
From June 1st, 2015, so actually item 4A of your consent agenda.
Because D is the termination of the 2008 development agreement.
Okay, okay, yes, yep, so it is under the meeting minutes.
So it would be our regular meeting minutes from June 1st, 2015. So how do we, how would you want to handle that? Just make that correction?
I can, if you just notate it, I can notate it in the minutes, and then just make the correction, as long as you approve it tonight, and it doesn't need to come back, otherwise if you want it to come back.
I don't think it needs to come back, but it was already approved under the consent agenda.
Can we send your motion?
Okay.
You can, I think you can.
Or friendly amend it.
Just note it, just note it for the record, okay. All right. So then with that, there is no question on the termination of the 2008? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to authorize resolution number 101-15.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, and we'll just make that correction under the minutes.
I'm sorry, who made those motions, I'm sorry about that.
Mr. Vanderlinde made the motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Public hearings, we have none this evening, so we'll move on to our business items. Professional service agreement for the 1315 Morningview Drive and 1400 Westwood Drive Drainage Project. This is something that we are very excited that's going to happen, so would you, staff, who wants to take this one?
Are you handling that one, Katie, or David?
To my knowledge, I was gonna.
Okay.
Okay. All right, September of 2014, council authorized staff to complete a preliminary drainage review of the existing ravine between 1350 and 1400 Westwood Drive. With that study, two options were investigated.
I can hear you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
With that study, two options were investigated, the first being installing a culvert into the existing ravine, and the second basically grading the ditch, and then installing grade checks to help, you know, mitigate the erosion issues. After meeting with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, their preferred option would be the second, to grade the ditch and install the checks. So with that being said, staff has prepared a proposal for preliminary final plans, drainage modeling analysis permitting bidding and construction services to reconstruct the ravine by grading and installing the ditch checks. In the amount of preparation of preliminary plans, preliminary specifications, drainage analysis, and project management for an hourly basis not to exceed of $13,860, and a preparation of final plans, final specifications permitting and construction services on an hourly basis of $14,944, with a total estimated fee of $28,800 in your council packets. There should be a breakdown of the fee if you're interested to know where those numbers came from. So with that being said, staff proposes or recommends adopting resolution, I believe it's 97-15, authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications permitting bidding and construction services for what we're calling the Westwood Drive Drainage Ravine Improvements, and further recommending adopting the resolution approving WSB and Associates Inc. scope of services to perform the services as outlined.
Can you tell us, I know that there's some flooding issues, so with this project and with these improvements, will the flooding issues be resolved for the property owners there?
Well, in working with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, it's kind of a collaborative effort. It's the big scheme of things, it's a bigger issue than what we can handle with one small project, just because the county road is throwing a lot of drainage in that way. We'll be able to mitigate a good chunk of the flooding with fixing the drainage channel, but there needs to be a little work with the county as well for future projects to help keep some of that water from just flooding out onto the properties in more channeled fashion versus what's happening out there today. So for the most part, it'll mitigate it substantially.
Okay, but.
Can we see the proposal, do you have something to show me? I'd like to know exactly what you.
We don't have.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking up that guy.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, hold on just a second. We're going to discuss this at the council level, and then I will give you an opportunity to step to the podium and you can ask some questions. So, yeah.
I didn't realize what I was involved in.
Okay. So here's my question, when you say the county, where are we at with the county then?
You know, as far as any communications with the county, unfortunately I've not been involved in.
Okay. Because, I mean, if we spend this money, which we have to, I understand we have to, but, and it still doesn't mitigate all of the flooding issues, how are we going to be assured that the county will step in and do their part?
And that'll be, oh I'm sorry.
No, that's another question.
I think, you know, with the discussions with the watershed, the last conversation we had, again, it was all very preliminary, we haven't hit that final design portion yet. They will, we will be bringing in Hennepin County during this final design.
Okay.
So, and we're hoping for it to be collaborative, even funding effort if we can, just kind of see what the total costs are going to be.
Right, I saw that in the packet.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll be working with them as closely as possible in the final design, so it's, the intent is to mitigate all of the issues, but, you know, anything that's maybe further upstream may have to be, you know, a project in the future with maybe the county's end or something along those lines.
Okay. All right. Council, any other questions? Because I know this is on our CIP for this year, and we don't want to delay it because we don't have a meeting until July 15th or 20th, so we want to make sure that we move, continue to move forward with this. If you don't have any other questions, then what I'll do is I'll allow this lady that's here this evening, if you would like to come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and then you can ask your questions. I believe you're the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Joyce Hoffman, and I guess the thing is, I'd like to see what the plans are, and how it's going to impact our property, and I guess I hope, you know, my son is here too, because he's going to be the eventual owner of his property, so he wanted to be here as well.
Sure.
And what I'd like to see is what your proposal is, because, I mean, the amount of drainage that comes through there from the county, from the road, from everything, you've seen the pictures, they're horrendous.
Right.
And so I guess I have several questions. One of them is, you know, we, our entire front lawn is nothing but sand and gravel and whatever that has run off the road. So what I'm wondering is, are your plans to put black dirt over that mess that we have on our front lawn so that it can be reseeded? That's one thing I'd like to ask. And then the other question I wanted to ask was, I was recently told that a lot, a dock has to be 15 feet from the lot line of the other owners, of other owners. Is there going to be enough room there, and how has that been provided for in the plans that you have so that we will have sufficient area to put in docking, for boat docking?
Right.
So I don't know if you have any other questions, are those, anything else?
Yeah, I think what.
Come to the podium, so we can.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I think, I think their main concern is, like I said, is to, you know, to make the, make sure the property is going to be usable and reusable.
Right.
What they'd like to do is to remodel the small, you know, like with a cabin, make it a very nice home, you know, to include that property.
And we want it buildable.
Right, buildable, and, and, you know, the ability to do that and stuff like that. You know, the dock situation, I think, you know, that part of the bay is filling in, I know David's having issues with that, and their docks are actually, because of the angle of the bay, their docks are starting to come, you know, over the front end of our property, so I don't even know.
Well, there's, the LMCD does handle dock issues.
Yeah, okay.
But what we're saying is, we have to make sure that we have room for docking.
Right.
And what the proposal was initially, was that we were going to take a 30-foot swath at the end and put in like, I think like a wetland area. Well, if you do that, it doesn't give us 15 feet to put in a dock, is what I'm saying, because that's a narrower lot, our other lot is 100 feet, this is 43.
Well, what I would, what I would suggest is that the, I don't know, do you know if they've met with the homeowner on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
As Metamayor Council, we've met out there a couple times with a couple different engineers in the watershed district. Plans and specs haven't been put together yet.
Right.
So there is no plan, those have all been ideas that have been tossed out there, because there is a group effort that's going on here between the watershed district and the county. The authorization tonight is to allow the engineer to go ahead and design the project, working with MCWD and Hennepin County.
So they originally designed that we got.
Well, there hasn't been anything designed yet. There's, there's just been ideas that have been.
Because they made papers the last time.
Those were just ideas.
Correct, correct.
A kind of solution, if you like, that's, there'll be actual proposals, so we should be patient and.
Correct, yep.
And I think your concerns have been noted here this evening, so I would like to ask that the engineers note that, and then continue to work with the homeowner, because their property is critical to this whole project, so, and of course, we want to make sure that the whole project is done properly and correctly, and that your property is restored as well, so, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, time is somewhat a factor, and obviously there's a lot next door, and, you know, we're just trying to get a resolution, you know, to the situation.
Right.
Obviously my parents are aging, and, you know, to some degree, it's locking them into where they are, because, you know, the one lot next door has flooding as a result of this, so to sell that piece of property, they have to dispose that to sell that, which also drops the values, and also drops people who were coming into that environment. So I mean, you know, it's affected them in a lot of ways, and we're just trying to get this resolved as quickly as possible now, and, and stuff like that, so obviously we would, that way, I think, which, you know, which is basic, is to just put some cops on over there so as you can reseed, you know, a lot of gravel, sand.
Because every time we mold, the gravel and, and sand are just flying all over the place, and, you know, it isn't like it's something that we can do an easy fix, it's got to have some topsoil over it or something, so that we can reseed it and get rid of all the gravel and all the sand.
It's okay if engineers could just, you know, make a peep in.
Sure.
You could look at it that as well.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay. All right, and we'll try and be working with you throughout, but we need, yeah, we don't have final design yet, we will be working on that, and hopefully in touch with you in between time as well.
Oh, is there any type of estimate as to kind of what you're trying, you know, timeframe? You're trying.
Yeah, the timeframe, so the plans and specs would be started now, the, sometime this fall, they would be working on the project. I believe it was September, October for finishing the project. So that's, it sounds like a ways off, but there's all kinds of steps that have to be taken.
At least if we know that we have an end game.
That's, that's what we're shooting for.
Sure.
That's what we're shooting for.
Do I need to get my official names?
Robert, okay, Hoffman, okay. All right, thank you very much, all right.
Then who's our segment?
Yes, yeah. Okay. So with that, any other questions then, and otherwise, I am looking for a resolution, approval of number 97-15 approving the professional service agreement for 1315 Morningview Drive and 1400 Westwood Drive Drainage Project. The information was in your packet. Any further questions, discussion? Otherwise, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution 97-15. Any further discussion? I'm assuming none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So you'll pass that on, Ms. Casper, to Paul, so that he can maybe meet with them, I'm not sure, you know, but make sure that their issues are addressed, okay.
Metamayor Council, I mean, your plans and specs are going to be brought back to you for approval, and absolutely will be in contact with them, and there's several steps left in this process.
Thank you. All right, then we move on to business item number B, and that's a resolution approving a conditional offer of employment for the HR Communication Coordinator position. This is exciting, one of our vacant slots that we've had for a while, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Barone at this time.
And Metamayor, I'm going to distribute, if you can just send one to the other council members. I apologize for the non-inclusion in the packet, there are a number of reasons for that, but I just want to hand that material over to you before I dive into it. This position is a new position for the city, it's not a new head count though in our overall job hierarchy or position hierarchy with the city, it's a position that is replacing the Assistant City Administrator position, my former position. As I noted in the agenda, the goal was to have a Human Resources Communications Coordinator position essentially paid at a lower level, because we were not going to be looking for somebody that was going to have to provide that, lack of a better phrase, second in command, or oversight on city operations. So the previous Assistant City Administrator position was a grade level 17 in our hierarchy, the salary range for that job was $77,800 to $96,900, whereas this new Human Resources Communications Coordinator position is a grade level 11 position, and that salary range is 55.6 up to 72.3. So obviously there's a savings there for the city. The two most important factors of the job are essentially what's in the title of the job, the HR stuff, and the communication stuff, which were essentially not getting addressed as we would have liked, and so that was the reason for making the move, was to have these two main features of the city be addressed by one person. They were typically, they were not doing that, they were not addressed by one person in the past. Our process began with our recruitment, we closed that recruitment in May, on the 14th, we had 12 applicants for the job, we had two levels of interviews, we had five applicants, we advanced to our first stage, and then we had two finalists that were interviewed on June 11th. The person that we want to offer the job for is, to, is Ms. Michelle Tesser. Michelle currently works for the City of Landfall, before that she was with the City of Falcon Heights. And you can see the salary offer, $60,000 per year, and she is, I think, quite excited about potentially, has accepted the conditional offer, and this, there are a number of steps that need to be completed, mostly related to the background, whether that's driving record, criminal history, financial credit, this position's going to have some control over budget, so we always do a financial and credit history of all our employees that are going to have the ability to deal with budget and dollar amounts like that. So looking to get your approval tonight for this conditional offer of approval for Ms. Tesser, and we expect that if she accepts the position, that she will be here hopefully in the, before we meet again in late July.
So Mr. Barone is really excited, because he'll get somebody on board to help out with the HR issues, and I'm really excited, because we'll get somebody on board to help out with the community outreach and communications issues, so I think we're all excited.
Kind of a win-win.
It's a win-win. And we did, Ms. Thole and I did participate in the interview, and this was a recommendation that unanimously we came forward with.
Two very good final candidates, it's been a tough decision, but I think this is the person we might have to.
So her past employment was a very similar job?
She's done many segments of these in her previous jobs, maybe not the same exact mix that we're offering here, but she's got very good experience in human resources, and also very good experience in communications, and so it's kind of an ideal match for us to find somebody that, that had those, that background and those skills, so very excited to have her here.
I'm sorry, Mike, where did you say she was previously working?
She's currently working at the City of Landfall, very small town near St. Paul, and then now, and before that she worked for the City of Falcon Heights.
And she resides or lives where?
She lives over in that neck of the woods.
Over in St. Paul?
Yeah.
That's a long drive.
We did ask her about that, so, yeah.
She has no.
So she'll be moving here soon, I assume?
I'm not sure about that, Mr. Christians, she's moving here, but she knows what our business hours are, so she'll be here from before 30 Monday through Friday.
And also evening council meetings, she'll.
Yeah, if necessary.
Yeah, if necessary. Any other questions? Otherwise, we are looking for a motion to approve the conditional offer of employment for the HR Communication Coordinator position to, I have to, Jessica Tesser, or Ms. Tesser?
Ms. Michelle.
Michelle, okay, sorry. Michelle Tesser.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions? And in the salary, the salary range, the salary amount you're okay with, that's being recommended? Okay, then, yeah.
I'd just like to commend Mr. Barone once again for not just moving forward with replacing the Assistant City Administrator position, but for thinking creatively and coming up with this position that will be more focused on serving specific needs that are important needs of our city at this point in time, and also having it be a good financial decision as well.
Save the city money. Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Well, if we hurry, we're still not going to meet your deadline, Mr. Christians, but business item number C, this is appointment of the Minnetrista representative to the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District. It would be resolution number 105. We did interview the sole applicant for the position, Mr. Brett Nicum, and very well-qualified and very interested in being the city's representative. Questions, comments? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve Mr. Brett Nicum as the city's representative to the LMCD.
I will make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. The only thing I, question I have now, are the Representative David Lang, is he going to be at the June 24th meeting? Maybe staff could just check in with him and verify whether he should be there, or Mr. Nicum can be there? Or maybe both could be there, just, not that both can vote, but one or the other, maybe Mr. Nicum would be there just to kind of get up to speed on some of the issues? If you can coordinate that? Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have, that does conclude our business items, so we'll move on to council reports. So we had an exciting tour this morning, about a four-hour tour, myself, councilmember Thole, and councilmember Mortensen, and along with staff, and also our, some from our engineering firm. We toured three different water treatment facilities, very interesting, very chilly. So, if it had been a 93-degree day, it would have been very nice. No, very interesting, very informative, a lot of questions were asked, and a lot of information that we got that we didn't have before, so I thought that was very good. And three different facilities, three different shapes, sizes, and everything, so it just gave us a good opportunity to see those. And I, just a couple other things, I did attend a retirement lunch for John Barton, he is the Natural Resource Manager for Three Rivers Park District, and he will be retiring soon. I worked with him for many years on the Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed, and also on the LMCD for quite a few years, so. And then I attended the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, that was our last meeting for the summer. Our next meeting will take place in September. We got a legislative update, which wasn't much, because not much was accomplished. One of the things that will, that we found out is, that did pass, small cities under 5,000 will be getting some road funding. They previously weren't eligible for MSA funds, and it's a little different than the MSA funding, but it is some state funding, and there's a formula that they figured out, so smaller cities, not us, will be getting funds that they previously didn't get for road projects, that was one of the things. And then I also attended a briefing, if you will, for the LMCD, it was just a very informal meeting, just letting us, letting the cities know what the budget is, and kind of giving us an opportunity to weigh in and so on, and I think you'll be happy to know that our portion, our member fee to the LMCD for next year will be going down approximately $3,000. They did reduce the budget by a significant amount, that probably won't be happening again, but it's kind of a one-year deal. With that, of course, Ms. Thole and I participated in the interviews for the Personnel Committee, and with that, I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Thole.
Okay. I attended the Parks Commission meeting last week, and the primary topic was Lyle Park, and it's pretty exciting, I don't know if you've driven past the tennis courts there, but they are really coming along, the blacktop is down, the fence.
I don't know if you've driven past the tennis courts there, but they are, are really coming along, the blacktop is down, the fencing is up. And, um, I, um, so I think that, uh, next is the parking lot that they're gonna be working on or, and so that project is coming along. And they were also, um, uh, Candace Amber was there discussing the next phase of Lyle Park and so, uh, they discussed some of the things that we passed on to them, be it the splash pad or, or some of those different items. And, um, for their next meeting, Nick Olson is gonna be coming back to them with, um, how much funds are, do they have to work with? For that next phase, that, uh, I believe it's our assumption that that wouldn't start until two thousand sixteen. Correct, because the tennis courts are, what's allocated for this year.
Anything else? Mr. Vanderlinde?
I have none.
Okay, Ms. Thole.
Uh, Mortensen, sorry. I'm really not hitting the names tonight, am I?
Um, Spirit of the Lakes, uh, it is coming up quickly and I have another meeting on Wednesday. And Mike, do you know if those forms got completed for the parade on the?
They do, Mayor, but I, or, uh, council member, but I will check and I will get back to you tomorrow.
Perfect. And I guess I need a commitment on who's going to be in the parade so we can get the number of cars we need.
I, I plan on being there. I'm practicing my wave. Come on, Mark, aren't you gonna practice your wave?
We're, we're gonna be out of town, so that we.
So, that's, that's a no, Bob?
I'm trying to figure out how I can do, we're in, uh, we're in the parade, uh, as B and I, Christians and I are representing there.
You, you have to split yourself in half and be in two places.
And be in three at the same time, three at the same time, so I'm already in the parade and, uh, twice. So, I gotta figure out how to be best.
So, should we plan on three people then in, because you'll be in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be in the parade, but I, I've gotta be in the parade with, uh, Christians and I.
Okay, we just need to know so we know how many probably get down to one car.
We can have one car then, yeah.
That would be good.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm already committed to be in the parade.
Okay. Uh, the booth, um, I'm working with SEH and, uh, they've been great. And so, uh, they are gonna have a representative there from eleven to six. And I'm wondering if there's somebody here that could kind of check in once in a while, um, I'll be there for a little bit.
I will be there, I mean, I'm gonna be there for WCC.
Okay.
And we'll be in the park, I'll be in the park during that open period, right after the parade, I'll be there most of the afternoon, so I could certainly.
Milling around.
Will certainly check in too, yeah.
Okay, and Paul Hornby is going to be there as well.
Okay, which is good.
Is it anything that, um, should we have like shifts or just stop by the booth?
Somebody has to be there all the time and whatever literature can be put out on the booth, business showcase is important. So, if there's any literature that you may have, Mike, that would be beneficial, I don't know if there's gonna be a current or that time.
We have some park pamphlets and we could, you know, we'll, we'll talk.
SEH is putting something together and running it by, uh, Mike.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet, but I know they're working on it, so.
And we talked about maybe doing a blow up of, uh, uh, the city map, so visually, it's a little appealing and drawing people in. So, SEH is working on that.
Good.
So.
Okay.
Um, and chefs, I would love to have chefs if you guys are going to commit.
There's also, on the Spirit of the Lakes, currently, there's approximately ninety opening jet for volunteers.
I know, yes.
Four-hour shift volunteers, so I'm assuming that all of you will volunteer, these were four hours.
Let's get them to our booth first.
Yes. To our booth, yeah.
And to clarify, it is a booth for the city, right? It's not SEH's booth.
No, it's the city's booth, yeah.
Yeah.
It's giving them some opportunity to get a little, to, to, free, free manpower to man the booth, if you will. And then giving them an opportunity for exposure, so.
Something like that, with a big sign on the front would be great, like the city would be great.
Yeah.
But it does take some effort and volunteers to help.
I'd be willing to work a shift, I don't know if we wanna, uh, figure that out offline as far as.
Do you want me just to email?
Yeah, just email and then I'll, we can.
The trick is, it opens at like right after the parade and you gotta get your parade unit out.
Yep.
And the parade unit is gonna kinda end at kind of like eleven, but the booth opens at eleven, so you, you get a little.
Well, I think we, we, we don't have, we would have Paul or, and or, um, somebody from SEH.
For setting and also set up and tear down.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll send an email to get the shifts covered, if that's okay with you guys.
Sure.
And then I'll be there whenever you guys are not.
Okay.
Uh, Pioneer Sarah Creek, there's a meeting on Thursday and they are reviewing the two thousand sixteen operating budgets and that's pretty much it, there's not much, anything as far as going in the way of coming a district, um, but that will probably be discussed at the meeting.
Okay.
I'm done.
You're done? Well, two things. One, I was really excited this weekend, you know, we had close to a thousand people in our city from all over the state at our WRA ball field this weekend for the girls fourteen, sixteen, and eighteen U softball tournaments, which is a big deal because of winners of those and the first and second place winners of those teams qualify to go to the nationals. So, it was really a big deal, uh, in fact, uh, if anybody wants to see one, I showed a couple of people the pictures of all the cars that were there. But for Minatrista, who has no, really no businesses, to draw a thousand people to a ballpark is amazing, so I was pretty excited. Now, if I go to WCC, Westside Community Commerce, as many of you know, we've been working on an event coming up for this fall on September nineteenth from five to eleven, gonna be called The Taste of Taco, okay? We're getting close to where we will soon be able to go to and solicit for sponsorships. We've got a number of people that have already made commitments. Uh, uh, we have a board meeting again Wednesday and at that point in time, the big glitch that we have, we've got all the approvals, but the glitch we have is to finalize the headliner, okay? We've got, uh, Hitchfield, which is a, a country band, that's kind of the start-upper, but we have a couple of options for the headliner and a national known headliner that we're trying to bring in. And so, we'll leave it at that until, once we make a decision on who's gonna be the headliner, I will share that with you and then we can start. Well, you know, again, we'll need some, we're looking for sponsorships and, uh, volunteers. That's it.
Okay, great.
Awesome.
Great.
Uh, Mayor, before I have a couple of, before I give that, I'm gonna, uh, Mr. Grimm would like, uh, give an announcement and an update on some of that.
Thanks, Mike, uh, yeah, the, uh, quick up, update I'm gonna give is the, uh, the online, uh, services for the utilities, the payments and billing options is up and running on the city website. So, if you go, click on that, it's on the homepage, I think it says online services and it'll take you to, you know, view or pay your bill or whatever. So, that's good timing with the second quarter billings will be out at the end of the month here, so, um, just wanted to at least get that out there. These people are, you know, ask you, is it up and running for, they can pay their utility bill online, so we're good to go, so.
Great.
I think we got it up, what, last Thursday or Friday?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we've already had one person sign up and do it, so.
I was gonna say, have you had, you're trying it out yet?
Yeah, yeah.
We just saw it right away and did it.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
So, yeah, that's all I had.
And the other two announcements that I would have, I just wanted to let the council know that, uh, we did hold on June ninth, that's from six to seven over in the police training room, um, the Enchanted Lane Road Improvement Project, the neighborhood meeting, I think we had around twelve residents there, which is substantial number considering there's only twenty-three residents out there or, uh, homes out there. And so, that was good success, uh, Mr. Hornby from WSB did a great job, uh, going through the options and I think we got a, uh, general consensus they're not really looking for the one point one million dollar solution, would be total reconstruct, but something, uh, obviously a little bit less than that, uh, maybe a millennial or something, so. Uh, Mr. Hornby will be working on options for the council based on that feedback and that will come to a future meeting, possibly the July meeting, but if not, shortly thereafter, but the, uh, um, the feedback was really good to get from those residents. And then the only other item that I have is a personal one, um, July sixteenth, which is a Thursday and, uh, July seventeenth is a Friday. I will be out of the office, I'll be out in, uh, Washington DC visiting my son who's, I'll do the summer on an internship, so.
Good, it's gonna be fun.
So, those are the two days just before the city council meeting, the following Monday, July twentieth, so I just wanted to make you aware of those, uh, those dates that I've got, so.
Yeah, and that meet, that neighborhood meeting was good, um, I know Ms. Mortensen and Ms. Thole and I, um, also attended. It's just good to hear, um, firsthand what the residents were saying and kind of their feedback, so. And he did, uh, Mr. Hornby did do a very good job of, um, the presentation and.
It was educational both from our standpoint, knowing what they're, where they're at and also from their standpoint, to know what's possible or not possible, so.
Anything else, any other updates? Otherwise, um, if we are done, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes.